Drink time, just like that.
Yeah.
Tell me it's dead. Gonna turn on the side first?
All right, give me the power on. We're good, we're good. Okay, okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. For March, this is a segments meeting for March twenty first and twenty four. All three selectmen present. Town administrator is absent. According for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Leo Martel. We have the town moderators here, former and current. And we have another gentleman here, a guest. Sir, I don't know your name.
It's Brian Watford, I'm seventeen branch unit.
Are you on any committees, will you know?
Uh, the energy committee.
That's right.
Yeah.
I, I thought you said it sounded familiar. So we got a gentleman from the energy committee too.
Yeah.
And we also have a planning board member coming tonight. Okay. Gentlemen, get some minutes to approve. Make a motion to approve the March seventh. Regular meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on those? Hearing none. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did they put the right date on that?
What day do you have?
I just wanna make sure that they have the right date on the meeting minutes.
Should be March seventh.
It is, we're good to go. Now, entertain another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that non-public meeting minutes of March seven, seventh, twenty twenty four as amended.
I'll second that. And for discussion, there'll be, uh, they do not have to be, uh, sealed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna open up for public comment, I'm gonna start with Matt Pearl. Ken? Okay, we're all good. Before we begin the, uh, meeting, I would just like to say, uh, I wanna say thank you to the residents of Dunbar who voted for me. I'm back on the board for a few more years, I will, and, uh, continue to do the best job to my abilities. And, uh, we'll go from there. All right, um, I'm gonna start immediately with, uh, Tom, this is Mike, you on the, uh, I'm glad you came up, because I, I understood you were at the town meeting. And you just followed from the town meeting, and I think, and so, I'm gonna give the floor as yours.
Okay. For, uh, I'd like to know when town is gonna start sending a plow, plow truck. Down my road, so I don't have to rely on Dave Knoll to plow my road, 'cause he does a shit job. And. Sorry about the language, but that most definitely describes the work that he's done in the past nine years.
Okay, so noted. Now, the thing is, there's a couple of things, there's a couple of things, I'll, I'll say loud, I understand your, your, your. Timeliness is something that's governed by the town policy. Thorough, major thoroughfares, bus routes, some of the town offices are always plowed, the schools are plowed before your road is.
Yeah, I, I understand, okay, sure.
As far as the quality, I've taken your concern about the quality.
Yes.
Okay.
And the timeliness of it.
Well, as I, the thing is, this year has been extremely challenging, if, if there's anything delays this year, because we've been down one plow driver. And that's soon to be rectified, because, uh, we're gonna hire one, probably, the season's over, it'll probably be in the fall, we anticipate hiring one and getting another, another plow route.
So, for next winter then, I'm gonna get regular snow plow service, like all my other constituents, all the other people who live in town.
No, the thing is, I gotta say one thing, we can't bring a big, we cannot bring a big plow truck up, because we don't have the adequate turnaround.
And why's that, it's been, it's been nine years.
Well, the thing is, if recall, your subdivision, we're working, we were working with you, with your subdivision, to get a, get a.
Okay, well, let me catch you off there, Mike.
Okay.
Dave Knoll, Jeff Crosby went down there. What, nine, ten years ago, built that turnaround. It's in the same condition it is, I mean, you, I got, I took pictures of it the day it was built. And it's still in the same, same condition. Now, he didn't put, import any effort into building this thing, making it wide enough for his truck. And, okay, let's say he did it, let's say the first year, okay, well, I can't turn around down there. Well, did he go down there in the summertime and try to open it up a little bit? Did he do that at any point in time over those next nine years?
How, no, he has not, and the thing is, I, 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 he has not, but the thing is, in the last two to three years, we were negotiating with you, and we negotiated successfully. Once, once your subdivision gets recorded and approved, we were gonna execute, uh, improvement to the turnaround.
No, your people asked me to sign that piece of property over, I had signed over. You guys can build on it.
Anytime.
Cool. You showed up with, with the, with the wood truck there, this fall.
Right, and, as I understand also, you kinda like told him to go away, no, I'm not gonna authorize any work in the building.
I told him to stay off my property.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause that's been a major, that's been a major, uh, malfunction of this town.
Okay.
For years, sitting here telling me that they had the right to come onto my property, they had the right in front of that town, uh, in front of my barn to turn around. On and on, they sue me, the town sues me, the town takes me to court. We go all through this whole dog and pony show, we don't, they, they put no credence on my, on my, uh, surveyor's work. On town history, nothing, they say, oh, no, 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 we have to sue you to find out, it's gonna be made a, uh, a subject for, for, uh, town meeting.
Some, some of those before my time, during the.
Well, Mike, it hasn't been before my time, and it's been ongoing.
Okay, now, as I understand, I'm not gonna go into the details of it, but the thing is.
Well, of course you don't wanna go into details, Mike, I understand why the town doesn't wanna go into details.
You, you, you prevail, well, what details you want me going to, I can go into them now, but the thing is, you prevail, courts agreed with you. But the thing is, up until that time, it was a turnaround being used by the time, by the town.
Did, did the town ever build it up to a twenty, forty nine feet? No, they left it at what, twenty-four feet? Oh, we can't turn our trucks around in here, it's too, it's too complicated, it's too much like work.
And then at one point, you were saying, it was your property, it was going back and forth, it was a dispute between you and the town.
No, I, I, I've claimed that property to where I claimed it, and that claim has been the same since two thousand fifteen.
All right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with you.
That hasn't changed. I'm not arguing with you, Mike.
For the fact, the thing is, what was gonna make things better for you, the turnaround, is once we get, uh, the okay from you to execute on the turnaround. He was ready to execute in the fall, but you kinda like chased the people off that.
I did not chase people off. The guy came down, he parked his equipment on my property, not in the right way. Not, not in the property that you people were entitled to work on, no, decided to go drive him off across my property and park it on my property. Because nobody from the town could give a crap about, they hired a guy, but they don't give him any guidance, they just send him down there, yeah, just go park wherever you want.
They didn't, they didn't say that.
Well, it sure looked like it.
But they didn't say.
And all I, and what, what did I do? I came up here, I gave, I put a sign on, charge you off-street parking for twenty dollars an hour, and I guess, that was too much. You know, everybody sat there, they, oh, this is, this is terrible, so they take their equipment and leave.
That was, as I.
Well, that's what they did, Mike, they're gone, right?
They did go.
They did, and they haven't been back. And they got that telephone pole laying down there.
We went into winter, as you recall.
Okay, went into winter.
And so I'm, if, if we're gonna continue, I would anticipate this spring, may, the, the road agent can get up there and make the improvements to the turnaround, which we all agreed to. Which we were ba, was based upon your severance.
Okay, so, so what you're telling me is that this, this problem's gonna be fixed this summer, by this fall at the latest.
I hope so.
And next, and next winter.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but the thing is, I would anticipate that would be an adequate amount of time.
Well, no engineer's gone out there and looked at that road at any point in time since I've lived out there.
Your engineer, you're a surveyor did, not an engineer, but you're a surveyor did.
Yeah, my surveyor did.
And he gave us, he staked it out appropriately.
That's right.
And, uh, those are very acceptable to the road agent, as I recall, because I walk with the road agent, as you walk with the three selectmen up there, they'll show us the slate out.
Okay, so what, what's going on?
Well, the thing is, in the middle of winter, it's hard to do any work.
Well, not winter now.
Well, the thing is, we got, understood, and so the thing is, I will contact the road agent and ask him when he can begin.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mike, I want, I want this solved before the snow flies next year, 'cause after nine years of this crap.
Mike, I think it's.
Of stupid excuses.
Don't keep going back in time, because I invited you personally to meetings to try to get a solution, while we were working this out over the years, when I, as chairman of the board previously. And you thumbed your nose at me, you did.
Thumbed your nose at you, what?
When I was trying to get an adequate timely response to how, what we can use to turnaround, and whether it be in front of the barn, whether it be whatever. Things I worked with you early on before your subdivision, to try to talk to you, I called you in, it was in August one time.
You called me in, and what you wanted me to do is let the town turn around on my property, open-ended, with, with nothing.
Thing is, as you recall, we were going back and forth, it was involved with the lawsuits too.
Yeah, well, I was involved with the lawsuit, I've been involved with lawsuits with this, this guy since two thousand and six. He came down, the town gave away my property to him, that's what the town did.
No.
The town gave him, gave him my property.
The courts did.
No, the town did.
Okay, well, I don't recall.
Well, I, it's okay, Mike, you don't recall, I do, that's what happened.
Fine. But the thing is, let's get back to the point we're talking about, I'm concerned about having an adequate plowing for you, agreed. And the thing is, I will talk to the road agent to make sure, to see what his plans are for this year as before the snow flies. I think that's, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you what, Mike, you can, you can talk with him, you can go see what his plans are, here's, here's my thoughts on the subject.
Okay.
I don't want him plowing my road anymore.
The thing is, you have no choice.
And I, no, I do have a choice.
Okay, tell me about it.
Everybody else gets it in town, right, Mike?
What do you mean, everyone else gets it, I can't determine who's gonna plow my driveway or not, or my road.
You get a town plow truck go past your house?
I can't determine what driver that's gonna be.
Yeah, well, ne- neither can I, and, and you're trying to, you're trying to, you're gonna try to give me some kind of sophomore, uh, argument here. Yeah, and why, that I have to know what time it is, or I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm telling you, they must come past my house at ten, ten thirty, six in the morning. Or by seven o'clock in the morning, they have to be by my house, no, that was never anything that I said.
I never said that about you.
Well, that's what you're trying to tell me.
What do you want me to say right now? What, what do you wanna hear from me?
What I want, is I want an answer from the town, that Jeff Crosby is no longer able to play these silly little games with his buddy Knoll.
All right, you accuse, that's accusations, I'm not gonna put up with that, you accused him of playing games, he's not his buddy.
Oh, he's not even playing games, so when you, when you sat in here and you apologized to me, oh gee, Mike, I'm sorry that Dave couldn't show up and plow your, your road, because he forgot, oh, he had to go snowmobiling, oh, you had to go all weekend.
When was that? It wasn't this season?
No, it was the season before.
Yeah, I recall having a discussion, and the thing is, I'm not gonna resurrect that, because we discussed that too.
Okay, and it keeps on going, Mike.
What do you mean, did he have a problem this year?
Oh, this year? Yeah, he didn't bother plowing the turnaround. And you wanna talk about that, I mean, you got, you got a snow plowing policy? Because you're not allowed to come off a, off a driveway and cross the road, and dump your snow across the road, right?
I'm the policy, but I'm not gonna go into that.
Yeah, it, it's, it's part of the policy, right? He does this every time he plows the road, he doesn't plow the turnaround, he waits for, he waits for his buddy Crosby to come down the day afterwards, and then he'll plow it out.
All right, I'm not gonna get into particulars on the snow plowing, because it's not my subject matter expertise.
Well, you're the select, you're selectman board, right?
No.
You're in charge.
No, I'm not in charge. I'm gonna read this to you, so you understand where I'm coming from, okay? I want you to understand, things, uh.
Uh, you know what, Mike? Okay, go ahead, read it, did you, did you find it?
I have the, the town policy, I'm just gonna go through it.
Town policy, all right, so plowing?
The thing is, the person responsible for that is not, we oversee the budget, but the highway department, the highway is responsible for it, the road agent is ultimately responsible for it. I can't answer for him, because I don't have him here, you're making accusations, you're making, his, David acts as a subcontractor, you're making accusations, I'm not gonna sit here and take that from you. I gotta, I wanna hear from the road agent. Because I, I hear you loud and clear that you, you're concerned, and the thing is, uh, you keep.
I'm not supposed to get upset, I, la- last ti, last year's town meeting?
Last year.
Okay, last year's town meeting, I didn't get my road plowed until three o'clock in the afternoon.
I, I seem to recall, this wasn't plowed all day, I, this was a priority before your road gets plowed, it was a major, major snowstorm.
It was a snowstorm?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, okay, it was a big storm, it's not the end of the world.
Okay, correct.
It wasn't the Bill, it wasn't the blizzard of seventy-eight, where we got a couple of feet.
But I seem to recall, even my driveway, I had to get it plowed three times, by myself, with a snow blower, just three times, to get, so I could get in and get out.
And I had to, and I got the snow blower and shovel a lot of myself.
Right, it was a difficult day for all.
Yeah, it was a difficult day for all, and I didn't see a goddamn snow plow until three o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
Three o'clock in the afternoon. It was, had eight inches of snow in front of my house at five o'clock in the morning that morning.
We're going back and forth, we're making accusations, so be it, what do you, the goal, the goal?
Making accusations, I'm not making accusations, I'm stating facts.
Well, I'm stating facts, it was a tough day around the entire time, you couldn't get her in through the park lots in town, the voting booths weren't even open, they had a tough time giving that clear.
I'm sure the roads got plowed here in town, they went driving around.
No, you're not sure, no, you're not, you're making, as a assumption, the roads were difficult in the entire town.
They're, okay, the roads were difficult in the entire town, but on the other hand, trucks were out all day long, driving around plowing snow, going on their routes.
Yes.
Which Kelsey Road is not on a route, it's up to Dave Knoll to plow that road. That's all it's been, last nine years, Dave Knoll shows up, day of storm.
As I understand, he makes the first blush at it, and then the second, the follow-up is usually done by the town trucks.
Yeah, the following day.
Oh, I, I can't, I can't make a.
Oh, yeah, you can't.
I can't, because that's not my expertise, I don't plow, I don't want to plow.
I mean, it's just my tax dollars, right? I mean, Knoll can drive up and down the road, he's got a four-wheel drive truck. His family's all got four-wheel drive trucks, matter of fact, he borrowed Justin's truck to come down and plow.
Mike, let's, 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 I wanna, I wanna bring this to an end, and we're just going back and forth here.
I don't give a crap if I'm going back and forth.
Well, I do.
I pay my, I pay taxes.
We all do.
Yeah, well, I want some goddamn service for me.
You don't have to swear at me like that, use language like that, please, I'm, one more time.
I apologize, I, I, I've gotten a little bit excited.
Okay, so no, let's, let's, me and you is back it off a little bit, I wanna go back to what we can do, and go into the future, I'm not gonna go back.
Okay, in the future?
Yes, the first thing I wanna do is.
The first storm of next year?
No, I'm talking.
I get plowed by the town, and, and we're all so, we're all set.
The thing is, and I don't, you don't care who the driver is, could be Dave Knoll, could be anybody.
Oh, no, 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 I want, I want a town truck, I want it to show up like it used to, not when, not when he decides to roll out of bed.
What you want is not gonna be what you get.
Well, I don't care.
Neither do I, at this point, because you're basically.
You know what?
Because the way you're treating me is unfair, I'm trying to.
And I should, and I do, I should treat you, treat you this way.
Why?
Why? Because you're giving, you're, you're giving me crap, crap excuses.
No, I'm not giving you any excuses, I'm just trying to say, the thing is, one thing that needs to be done.
Where's Crosby?
I didn't invite him to this meeting, I wanted to hear what you wanted to talk about first.
Snow plowing.
Yeah, snow plowing. I, I wanted to hear your side first, I'm not gonna get a tit for tat, I'm not gonna have him come in here and do what we're doing, I could be argumentative, I don't wanna be argumentative for you.
I'm not being argumentative, Mike, this has been going on for nine years, year after year after year after year. And I've been getting other, but stupid excuses, stupid excuses, stupid excuses, and I've been sitting here, and I've been letting this go. Well, I don't know if I'm letting it go, but I, well, certainly haven't been spreading it out like I'm spreading it out tonight, because I am tired of it.
Okay.
Just like I said at that meeting down there, I am goddamn tired of it.
Please, use your language, please, I don't wanna hear the vulgar language, I don't have to hear that.
That's too bad.
All right, then have a nice day, I'm not gonna put up with, I'm gonna ask you to leave. I don't, I mean, the thing is, I'm gonna leave, should I talk to the road agent about this, or should I just let it go, you don't even wanna come up with a plan with me?
No, you better talk to the road agent about it, and, uh, this is, this is horse crap.
No, it's not.
It is.
I disagree with you.
It is, I think anybody, who, who got put in my position, who's been dealt with the way that, the stupidity that he's come up with. And just gas it off, oh, no, well, we, we're just, uh, too bad.
It's not too bad, but the thing is, you don't, you don't have the high priority road to get plowed, that we have.
Well, I understand I don't have a high priority road to get plowed, but it should get plowed.
It does.
No, not like it used to, not like it used to, not since Crosby and, no, showed up.
All right, I will talk to Mr. Crosby, okay? The thing is, uh, the one thing I wanna go forward with is, you're given a green light for the work on the turnaround, but not to get on your property, I agree with you, it should be on your property. Except for the driveway that was staked out by your, by the, uh.
That's right.
And that's it.
Yeah, they don't need to be backing up into my driveway anymore.
I, I understood.
I don't need Crosby, I don't need Crosby driving up to Knoll's house.
Come back here, let's work out a plan real quick, I just wanna have some ground rules.
Sure, ground rules.
As we go forward, the thing is, uh, so you got the green light to start working on the turnaround. Keep off your property, except for the loud survey stake area that we, was staked out.
Yeah, you're only in the right way.
Well, some of it extended a few feet onto your property too, the right, the right way that was, uh, in, on the plan.
That's, that's, uh, the right way now.
Yes. Okay. And you can start anytime, but stay out of your driveway, I agree with that. All right.
And he doesn't need to be driving up to Dave Knoll's house.
Why can't he? He can drive up there, just send.
Not, not in the town plow truck. It's the appearance of, uh. I mean, it. Yeah, Crosby came down there, it was the day after the storm, and he had, uh.
I recall, I investigated that.
Huh?
I investigated that on your behalf.
Investigate what?
The fact that there was a town truck up there, he did go down to Dave Knoll's house, Dave was not home, but he wanted to compliment Dave on some of the work he's been doing.
Well, you see, that's, that to me sounds kinda suspicious.
The thing is, it can sound, but I can only take the man and his word.
Okay, well, he, here's, here's a theory that I might, that, that I might float.
Okay.
Okay? Jeff came, Jeff, Crosby came down Kelsey Road that day, it was three o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Sanding the road, road was starting to freeze up. Course it was all slushy, of course, if it was slushy on Kelsey Road, it's gonna be slushy all the way out on the Knoll's property, all up on there.
Sure.
You know, fifteen hundred feet of driveway. I know for a fact that the driveway going up to Josh and Lee's house. That's his eldest son and, okay, sister-in-law, daughter-in-law, okay? That hill's pretty steep, so I can see Jeff driving out there with that sand truck, backing up that driveway, dumping off sand and coming back out. I mean, that's just an alternative explanation for what occurred.
Yes, but the thing is, I can only take the man at his word.
Oh, okay, you can only take Jeff at his word.
Yes.
He's, he's the same guy that's come down onto my property, he's stolen property from me, he's lied by omission. I mean, he, he's done all these things, right?
The thing is, let's get to a he said, she said, and I'm not gonna go.
No, no, this isn't.
That way.
Well, this isn't, I'm not saying he said, she said, but the thing is, the point being, he shouldn't be driving a town truck out, there's no need for it, in this day and age. I wanted to, I wanted to contact somebody, let them know that I thought that they did a great job, I could let my fingers through the walking.
It's his prerogative how he wants to contact him, I'm not gonna micromanage him, and I cannot micromanage him for that fact. Now, let's get back to a plan. We said about green light for the turnaround, the goal is to have a town truck up there using that enhanced turnaround by those, by before the snow falls this coming winter.
Yeah?
That's the goal, I'll relay that to the trans, uh, to the, uh, uh, highway.
Cause he doesn't need Dave Knoll anymore.
That's.
He doesn't need it.
The thing is.
Unless he gets a route, unless he gets a route, the one road is not a route.
The thing is, you are not gonna.
The one road is not a route.
I think is, I cannot micromanage his hires, and I'm not gonna micromanage.
Somebody needs, needs to take that idiot in hand.
Please don't de- decorate him like that, he's not an idiot, okay?
No, he's lying to the truth.
Mike.
Along with him.
Please leave, I don't, I don't remember this, you have a great evening. Gentlemen, for the record, I thought I, for the record, I thought I gave him a fair opportunity to speak, uh, he has got.
Feel free to go fuck yourself.
You get that?
All right, thank you so much, sir. I thought I gave him an opportunity to speak, and, uh, he had to end up with a nice vulgarity towards me, I guess I'm getting a magnet for it. That's all right. That's all right, I'll leave that, I think we'll be fine, but, uh. Did you hear that, sir?
I, I just caught the tail end of it.
Just, the, the one, the one, uh, nice compliment he provided to me on the way out?
Yes, that one.
Yes, that's one, sir, sir, I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
For sure, for sure.
We're watching, also watching from outside.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, but the thing is, I gave him, he's got to have some concerns, gentlemen, I will pass it to the road agent, if we get consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, it seemed to recall this fall, when he was going, doing some work up there, there was, came to a standstill, because there was some pushback, that there was gonna be no work done until the, the.
Until he's, he's asked to do subdivision.
And you heard, for the record tonight, that he said we can continue to work on these, on the turnaround, which has nothing to do with the subdivision, it's related, but has nothing to do. The subdivision has still not been filed yet, and just for the record, he said we could begin on it. Okay, I wanna publicly said that, was noted tonight. And, uh, and hopefully, Jeff can get an enhanced turnaround, he was ready to execute last fall, did not occur for some pushback by the, the letter.
I think, um, I think there was some legal counseling reference to whether we can start it well, so we should follow.
No, I, it was, we had, definitely had the green light. Because it has nothing to do, as, uh, as I remember the planning board here, has nothing to do with the subdivision, it was, uh, an adjunct to the subdivision, but not one is dependent upon the other. It was completely separate, that's how the planning board, uh, recognized that. And so, I, I look at it as a green light for the road agents to continue to work as, uh, spring, uh, when we get into late spring.
Sprint the laws, the road, road moments get lifted.
So that's great, and Dave, as far as, uh, hiring you, it's not my prerogative, I think it's the road agent's prerogative.
I've asked Jeff not to do the road for the last three years, probably, or four years, Jeff needed the help and begged me to do it, so, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
The road agent had asked me, because he can't get there early enough to open the road up, so.
And for the record, it's not a prerogative to manage the.
Right, I didn't bring that up tonight, because I don't think it's the way he's taught us it should be brought.
All right, so, uh, it's not the purview of the.
I don't even wanna do, I was doing it to help the road agent out.
Any other last comments on this, I'll take any from the public, uh, be concerned, how this is, uh, it's a challenge sometimes.
More handle.
It's a challenge sometimes, I'll leave it at that. All right. Selectment appointments, with a deputy, with a town clerk, please come on up, you wanna talk to us, or you got some appointments for us, or you're not ready to execute?
Were you gonna do the selectmen's representatives, Chris?
We were gonna do that in conjunction, same time, if you had something, I can, we can start with yours, if you'd like, so we don't have to hold you.
I was gonna make.
We're gonna talk to her anyway, whenever the others.
And then see if I could squeeze those in, if there's any.
So our appointments, going back to our appointments, I think, they're pretty much gonna stay the same for what we've talked about.
Except that, uh, the, uh, whip committee, you will.
I was looking to get off the joint loss committee.
I was gonna become joint loss.
That sounds great to me, Mike.
Okay.
Just make sure they're joint loss issues.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, that's the biggest thing on that one. No plowing issues.
Say again?
No plowing issues.
Slip and fall, maybe.
Slip and fall, was.
All right, so that was easy on the appointments.
All right, so anything else that we need to, we're gonna change, the chairmanship, just, uh, let's, let's, I'd like to nominate, uh, Dave to become the new chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Nope.
Can we usurp them, if we don't like those decisions?
Pause them?
Yeah.
Always.
Always. And that could be done, but there is a method of doing that, by the way.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Davey win another new chair, effective April first.
Okay. Mike's gonna get the bigger page till April first. There's like twenty dollar difference.
In fact, if you want it that bad, I'll give you an extra dollar if you take over next week. All right, um, any other appointments we have to be worried, concerned with, what else we?
I don't think so, nothing, I have papers on me right now.
Justin's gonna continue with the planning board, uh, you'll continue with the transfer station, because of supervisory responsibilities.
We'll keep all the rest of our boards, 'cause.
Yeah, I'm on the Kentucky Fried Chicken board, or.
And the energy committee.
Now, the, the, the library, town hall restoration, is that dissolved now?
They're still working on curtains and, and blinds and that type of stuff, in fact, somebody was supposed to be at this meeting to let us know about the curtains and how much kind of accept. Supposedly the curtain has been ordered, even though they're supposed to come before us and let us know what they were doing.
Okay, but the thing is, uh, the biggest thing on the curtains.
It is all fire rated.
Fire rated, that's the bottom line there. They can't buy anything with.
And no money came from the town as part of their.
Donations, donations. Okay, I'm gonna close up on appointments. You wanna talk now or you wanna wait?
I just had a question on that. So is the town hall restoration committee gonna continue, and I should do appointments for.
It is gonna continue, I believe, yeah.
For the following year?
Yeah.
Okay.
The thing is, it's an old building, I'll be honest with you. It's not like having a brand new building, we renovated it, but the thing is, there's always problems with an old building.
There's always needs and things they're looking at, they're looking at maybe some sound baffling up there, so. It gives a, a group of people stuff to bring to us, and then we can kind of either approve it or disapprove it or change it.
We went to one season with the heating and cooling, we wanna see how the summer works with the, with the cooling this summer, and the thing is, we really haven't addressed that to any great extent. I mean, we require visiting.
Okay, so I will reach out to the members.
Okay.
To ask.
I'm the selectmen's rep on that committee too.
Okay, uh, can we, anything else, Jennifer?
You can continue.
Okay, um, I'd like to move on to item number three. We have a. Yeah. We have some money that came to the town from the Health Trust. And if you don't know what the Health Trust is, it's a organization which we buy our insurance from, we do wellness type activities, they give us some dollars for health, wellness activities for employees. And uh, instilling good lifestyle, work habits, lifestyle habits and all that kinda stuff, and they, if they come up with a plan where they can help employees who uh, certain training programs, we get some money, and Justin, I'll let you go from there.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept five hundred dollars from Health Trust for the Police Department Wellness Program.
I'll second that, Dave. Okay, wait, any other discussion on that? Did I explain it well enough?
You did, all in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mike, while we're on Health Trust, I'd like to pass this uh, by the board. I worked with Hope uh, this week on this issue. Um, there's been some people asking to change the stipend amount for people that do not use the town insurance but could use it.
Okay.
Because a spouse has it, and um, the stipend amount is on a Plan B single. Is, the stipend amount is forty percent, and it doesn't matter if you have a two person or a family, the stipend's a flat um, amount. The stipend amount right now is two eighty-two, forty-eight per month. And they were hoping to increase that, and it would save the town a huge amount of money by less people being on the insurance. Um, I did have Hope call Health Trust to say that we have seven people on town insurance now, they're all either two or family, and. Some of these people are not double insured, but their wives have options too, and if that rate was a little higher, they probably would opt to take and use their wife's insurance. Saving us the lion's share of their eighty percent. Just so people know, on a single plan, the town pays nine seventy-two a month. A two-person plan is nineteen forty-four, and a family plan is twenty-six, twenty-five. So when you're offering. Two eighty-two a month back, it's quite a savings for the town even on a single, even though we don't have that of people not using it. Um, this was brought up by the Chief of Police. Earlier on, we said we'd look at it.
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna look at it in June, but this seems pretty simple. I, I did numbers going up to fifty percent, it didn't seem like high enough a change. So my suggestion is to stay with the single Plan B, and see if you guys agree with me or not, and go to sixty percent of the single plan.
With that being the dollar value, approximately.
Let me just do math quickly here.
And for, for the public, I, I'll explain one more time, a little bit simpler, a different perspective, but the thing is, uh, when husband and wife, wife works elsewhere, she has her own insurance. Uh, rather than the employee taking the town insurance, which we have to pick up eighty percent of it, it saves us eighty percent of the cost, and so we give them a stipend to encourage them to take the wife's insurance. Many industry, it's very standard in industry to do that, and uh, it's a win for the employee, he gets some extra dollars, and it's a win for the town, because we don't have to pay his high bills, that's significantly a savings for the town. So it's a, as I said on the town meeting, becomes that famous word, a no-brainer.
So it would end up being five eighty-three, forty-eight a month at sixty percent.
I have no issue with that.
And even on a single, we're, we'd be saving four hundred dollars and.
Now, does a single is what?
A single is nine seventy-two, forty-seven.
A month.
Yeah. And I'll make a motion, we, we accept.
Anybody that goes, it's still huge savings to the town.
I make a motion, we accept the uh, adjustment to the stipend to sixty percent of a Plan B single payer.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
We can make it effective uh, me, eh, eh, for April, April first.
I'll say so.
Effective April first, okay.
Well, we'll check, we'll check on the effective date with the uh, plans.
Okay.
Uh, but, yeah, we'll do it as soon as possible.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Simple led it.
Well, that takes that off our plate for June.
Right. And just for the record, for the public, we haven't addressed the, that stipend, we would pay those employees, it's been over fifteen years since it was adjusted. There's been no inflation adjusting, no adjustments at all, so it was, that two hundred eighty-two dollars seems like, that's a good amount, but that was fifteen years ago. Now it's up to five eighty-three, which is uh, over fifteen years, it makes sense. So thank you, Dave, for looking into that. Okay. And I have one more in from the police department, we can wait on that, um, when it comes around to me, I'll talk about it. Jennifer, you're up, if there's anything else you wanna talk about? You can sit in my hot seat here, no bad language.
One is we have a poll license, and I gave a copy of the map to Jeff Crosby for him to check it out.
Okay.
Get back to you if she has any issues. There's copies to PSNH, uh, Dunbarton and the Dunbarton Telefilm Company.
George, George.
And a whole sign above the line where your name is on the site.
You listen to this, pretty sharp. Sign above the name.
Sign above your name.
We should put a sticky on there so we know.
I'm making it easy for you after a hard night, right?
Oh, it's, gotta think with a grain.
Here's the map of where it's located. Jennifer, I have a couple of small things I'd like to check with you. I was gonna review with the selectmen anyway as far as.
He's my buddy.
That'd be okay to do for the night? Uh, we could, if there's anything. No small non-public at the end, we could. I wanna talk a little bit about. Some days off, sick days, vacation days.
Here and there.
For, for Jennifer. It kinda mixes in a little bit with. Uh, full-time benefit package. Be on the same page with Jennifer.
I, I think, you have no problem staying around? We're gonna be not, we're gonna be finishing episode later.
We will do a small non-public. Mike, you signed on my line.
April first, my friend. I delegate, listen to this, John. Could you pick up the signs? I got them too.
I've prepared the following appointment papers.
Oh, you have all the papers too.
I have all the papers, do you want to do the signing now or?
How I, well, you could do the sign now, but how I generally do it is I'll, I'll read those through.
Yeah.
In one, one batch, and then you also.
Do you wanna just batch, batch proof?
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it right off your cover sheet if that works. Uh, we have the following appointments that Jennifer has made up for us, for the following committees. Town Hall Restoration Committee.
Oh, that.
Right?
That was a no.
Oh, that was a waiting.
Oh, that one's okay.
That was a waiting, and you've given me direction.
Alright, so Energy Committee, we're moving on to that one. Dana Lavoy, twenty twenty-seven, John Stevens, twenty twenty-seven, Brian Watford, twenty twenty-seven, and David Noll, Selectmen's Rep, twenty twenty-five. Going on, Historical Awareness Committee, David Noll, Selectmen's Rep, twenty twenty-five, Old Home Day Committee. Um, Cassandra Longbrin, Thomas J. Cassano, Kenneth Kerber, Mark C. Lang, Donald J. Larson, George Maskill, Megan Morrow, and John Stevens. Pre-ambulation or preambulator of the town lines, Frederick J. Mullin, twenty thirty-one.
No alternate this year?
No alternate, they are listed.
I know, that was a little bit of humor.
Um, Planning Board, Kenneth Swayze, up to twenty twenty-seven, you okay with that, Kenneth? Allison Valeries, twenty twenty-seven, she called it last year and said she liked, or last night, said she'd like to be on it. Justin Nolte, um, ex-officio, twenty twenty-five, and Mike Eskaminsky as alternate ex-officio, twenty twenty-five. You okay with alternatives?
Yes, and uh, when the uh, selectmen's rep has gotta excuse himself for being in a butter on something, I, you will fill in as appropriate.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, Daniel Delprah, twenty twenty-seven, and John R. Tradi for twenty twenty-seven. You still good, John?
I'm still good. Where you going? Still the cheer, right? Well, let's find out.
How many years?
I'll see, it'll be twenty-eight years.
Okay, here's your cover sheet, Jennifer. Is that ours?
That's yours.
You got a lot on the end of Dave.
And I reached out to the other, I, I was only reaching out this week, so not everybody's had time to get back to it, but.
We can, we can do next, next.
Next meeting.
Yes.
I think he has some under gray.
What's that?
I think he has some under gray, I'm just wondering if you wanna let you send to the, the cemetery.
Okay.
I think he even just said he has, okay, she just comes when she can. You wanna email him?
Sure.
The cemetery trustee.
Looking for my paperwork, I've taken notes, but I don't think this is mine, I think that was sitting there.
Yes, that's, that's true. No, that's fine.
I'll get a couple of meetings early next week, Jennifer, so I'll come in early in the weekend. Get square, am I okay?
Oh, I can insert you in.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't know what meeting, but wanted to remind you at some point, you wanna talk about the selectmen pro temp rate for elections, I don't know if that's gonna.
The thing is, um, I like, the thing is, what we, you know, the thing is, I think we made a, a decision. Is, we have two rates now, one for counters, and a separate one for people who require his training. I was gonna lump it into those people who require training, if I get consensus for the rest of the books, and moderator, you can chime in too.
Well, she was talking about maybe keeping one different, because there are different responsibilities for each other.
I wasn't, I was just reminding.
We tried to make them the same to make it easy.
No, but, 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 there's a difference between uh, just a vote counter, and someone's gotta be trained, and back 10 trainings, I wanna keep that dichotomy.
Right. Okay.
And so, as a pro temp, he still has to go for training, should, he should go for some training.
Has been.
Yeah, and so I like to keep it the same rate as uh, we, 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 we ameliorate those people who get the training, otherwise such as the.
End up actually.
Oh, such as the um, voting checklist people and, and the, the, all the checking people. Makes sense, gentlemen, consensus? Consensus, Dave?
I didn't hear you.
I'm gonna keep it as the, as the, hell, you hear me. Okay, you get consensus.
I think keeping them all different is fine, if Jennifer wants to propose a new one, I'm good with that too.
No, the thing is, we just raised them last year and part of our.
Oh, we did?
Yes. Thing is, what fell through the crack, John, was we, for se, for pro temp, for a selectmen, we had no rates, and selectmen get a salary.
Yeah.
And so, we're gonna give financial reimbursement, if so desired, to the selectmen pro temp at the rate, same rate as uh, those individuals who require training for the election. Uh, checking clerks, secretary of the checklist, I mean, uh, checklist people, yeah, supervisor checklist, excuse me. So it's on a similar rate, but all the same, which is a little bit higher, as we recall, than just the one who comes votes.
Correct.
And last year, when we did the overhaul review of all salaries and reimbursements, they all, we elevated them a little bit, everybody.
Makes sense.
Okay, so just uh. The thing is, I hate the word almost common sense, you know?
Yeah.
The thing is, we were approached with that because we had a selectmen pro temp, and it was a question mark, well, what do we pay him? I was, Dave wanted, Justin wanted to pay him the same salary we get, zero.
He's gonna follow her, he's doing our kindness, that's our.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the end.
Yeah. Alright, I'm gonna look for mailbox items, I don't think we have anything in mailbox. The exception of. The police department came to me, and uh, one thing, we wanna make, remain, we want to remain competitive when it comes to detail rates. It's a win for the officer to get some extra dollars in his pocket, it's a win for the town, because we get a small percentage off for admin, the process it, you take a few dollars off. We take a few dollars for depreciation from the vehicles, so the money we obtain from details goes into our, uh, capital improvement fund for the vehicles. And so he's got some proposals, uh, we can't, basically, this gotta go before a public hearing, which we cannot do tonight, but I have a, this letter, so I want you to look at it. Um, it's very simple, the uh, the changes.
We have copies from.
Yeah, I do, I do it there. And uh, I, I think that the recommendations are reasonable. If he, uh, you may have the old one, Dave, it's sitting up front from school. I, I've got the old one now, just in case.
I'm gonna say I got the same one.
The old one? This is it, this is it. You should have three copies here. But you see this changing, currently, we're getting officer fifty dollars an hour, cruiser twenty dollars an hour, admin fee fifteen dollars an hour. So it's a total of costs eighty-five dollars an hour with cruiser. Again, these do, dollars are being paid for by industry, nothing to do with the town taxpayers or anything like that. This, when you see the officer on detail, like stopping traffic and letting traffic go, and uh, we wanna increase the uh, officer increase to, instead of fifty, bring it up to sixty dollars an hour. The cruiser from twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars an hour, admin fee wants to keep the same, and all, altogether, it's ninety-seven dollars an hour with cruiser, seventy-five dollars an hour without cruiser. And that way, continues to add funds to our uh, capital improvement funds for vehicles and so whatnot.
Mike, on our last increase. We didn't give the majority of it to the officer, we kinda split it up more than this.
We can talk about that, if, the thing is, I, I brought the last one, just.
Can I see that?
Sure, okay. That's why I brought it, I figured the big questions.
What's that?
Yeah, in twenty nineteen, we did the same, we did a very similar increase.
Thought we just increased it recently, within the last few years too.
I look for.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I, I was looking for it, I couldn't find it in the email.
I thought we did it with, we did do it with Chris, we didn't do it with screw.
That may be an old, it may be old one.
Well, maybe Chris presented it, I'm thinking.
I think he presented it, I don't think we changed it.
I thought you were on the board.
You better ask them. But we got the new proposals here. What, what's, what's the final, what's right there? Simple as that, we can cross chart, cross reference it.
Well, the officer rate was forty-two here.
And what was it, what was the rate?
Years, yeah, so it did go up, the officer went up to fifty, cuz he's saying sixty and it's ten dollars more.
Right.
And the cruiser was fifteen, cuz he presented us a graph with different towns and.
Exactly.
So it was pretty close to him.
Yeah, I asked.
So we're still competitive.
We're still competitive, that's a whole, he doesn't wanna up, up prices.
The officer used to be forty-two, and on this one, they brought it to forty-eight, so we did bring it up by two dollars.
Yeah.
So maybe we should see that on all of.
Okay.
We should get the other, um, trends we include. I just wanna.
The thing is, no, no decision, this is just information, so you can just digest it, understand it, and then uh, when she, how the chief come in, we'll schedule a public hearing. And I also wanna reach out to uh, the transfer station, I wanna reach out to the town clerk, anywhere we charge fees, if there have been any exorbitant price increases to the town. I don't wanna pass it on a hundred percent to the voters, because, residents, because transfer station, that's one of the few services I get, but if, we wanna just make it fair for all. So if there's any increases, Jennifer, I'd be appreciative if you could review anything, we don't make none at this time, so be it, and Dave, transfer station, same, same. For example, you need to, you wanna get rid of a refrigerator, you have to pay a few dollars to the transfer station, but it's not the full cost to remove it. Agreed? As a former selectman, Dave used to say, one of the few services we have in this town is the transfer station, we don't wanna nickel and dime the residents, since they're already paying taxes for trash disposal. I agree with you, Dave. Alright, that's just for. Information at this point.
Do you want to comment actually?
Yes. Then we'll schedule a public hearing from there.
Mike, if we can make a note, when you give us the old, the two old ones.
Hold on, I was gonna, I was gonna add, please. Okay, I'm gonna pull public comment again?
Back row.
Public comment? Fred, you mixed the excitement. I had a, my famous word is being, being broadcast everywhere, what can I say?
I'll see you on that.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
Hey, we had a bit of, we, we had more fun, lift assist.
Oh. Okay. Okay, um, back to the board.
Let's do public comment first.
I did.
You did.
Everybody?
Yeah, you weren't paying attention.
Fred, you have anything?
No, well, except that uh, this year, we get a probably three town lines, and I was gonna ask Lane if she can get a hold of the hooks at one, to do that in the spring. No, well, except that, uh, this year, we get a probably three town lines, and I was gonna ask Lane if she can get a hold of the hooks at one, to do that in the spring. I'll, I'll stay here next weekend.
Okay, reminder then, when she gets back.
Yeah.
We'll just load up her plate.
Okay.
Okay, she can only have, uh, one week at a time, then she, you gotta put it back to work.
Yeah. I'm surprised she doesn't take it off town meeting like.
Oh.
Um, I have, I have, uh, I do have one thing for the board. Um, the hardware was replaced on the town hall library doors. It was defective from the main factor.
For the, for the record, we, uh, during the, uh, construction, they put some nice hardware with, that was a slag.
Yale.
Yale, nice Yale hardware on there, and then it was giving us problematic since day one. Then we got a recall notice. It's been recalled, because it's defective.
How many did you have to take off?
Three.
Oh, no big, no, no big deal.
Maybe, maybe four.
But it's, uh, it's, it's covered by the, uh, insurance, not insurance, but the warranty.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Oh, that's all I have.
Okay, Justin, anything? All right, I'm ready to go in non-public. We'll go in non-public to talk to Jennifer.
I'll make the, uh, motion here.
Personnel issues?
Make a motion to go in non-public for Alice ninety-nine dash eight.